First thing on the agenda, I have a motion to approve unapproved minutes.
To approve?
I have a motion by Mosh, second by Trampel.
Yes.
To approve unapproved minutes, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Kippenberger?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Motion approved, next is approval of force of office, I have a motion.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Trampel, second by the motion, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Kippenberger?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Motion approved, next is notaries. But we have three in the package and then one left down there.
I have a question about one of these.
Okay, which one?
Um, Doris lady. She is a county commissioner in California. And she has two?
She has one.
And so she, she still has our commission in California that was, uh, that she's been. And she has two at the same time?
Hope that's everybody else up actually.
You just put Marius effective, the man who goes out to California becomes effective here.
We don't know when it gets there.
And this is a Tennessee notary, uh, this is by state, so.
And she still has a California balance left.
Now, she is resident, is she correct?
Yes.
Okay, so she is a resident of Tennessee. As long as this is for a Tennessee notary, uh, it shouldn't affect another state.
I just don't know, cause she says she's still current. But this state can't take it out.
No, not Tennessee because of another states. It's not like, uh, driver's licenses. Alright, let me read these all, but Jacob, Aldous Burrows. John. Can't read that. Daley. Doris. Charis?
Charis.
R R R. And then box, the fourth one is handed out, that's the. It will toss. Okay, uh, are you only going to draw one more?
I just, I just didn't know since she's already got one current in California, is. I thought you really just have one.
I've, I've never really heard either way except they're by state. Uh, I don't know. I think you can have a notary in multiple states at the same time if you're doing businesses or companies and this and that.
I just, I just.
Can we approve it pending this?
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve before?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Mosh, second by Mosh. Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan? Yes. John Kippenberger?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Motion approved. Uh, budget amendments, we have a motion in the package. Tax rate resolution. Fisher, Debbie, do you want to read that resolution?
Yeah, what all this has to be read?
There's a tax rate resolution and it's the smaller pages, the first one.
Just the first one?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Resolution fixing the tax levy in Polk County, Tennessee for the year beginning July the first, twenty twenty-three. Section one, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Polk County, Tennessee, assembled in a regular scheduled meeting on the twenty-fifth day of July, that the combined property tax rate of Polk County, Tennessee for the year beginning July the first, twenty twenty-three shall be at one dollar point six eight nine five on each one hundred dollars of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds that otherwise conform to the following levies. Let me read this general part. General, be one dollar point one zero one seven. Solid waste sanitation, zero point one five zero zero. General purpose school, zero two. Zero point two four five two. General debt service, zero point one nine two six. Total of one dollar point sixty-eight nine five. Be it further resolved that there is hereby levied a gross receipts tax as provided by law, the proceeds of the gross receipts tax herein levied shall occur to the general fund. Be it further resolved that all resolutions of the Board of County Commissioners of Polk County, Tennessee, which are in conflict with this resol- resolution are hereby repealed. Be it further resolved that this is the resolution takes effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it. This resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of the County Commissioners, passed on this twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion to approve the tax rate?
Motion to approve.
Next. I have a motion by Trampel, second by Brooks. Any discussion? That's the total tax rate of one point six eight nine five. Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan? Yes. John Kippenberger?
Yes.
Smith and Trent? Yes.
Motion approved, tax rate is. Next is the appropriations adoption resolution. Let me look right quick. Debbie, do you care to read this one?
A resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institution, offices and agencies of Polk County, Tennessee for the year beginning July the first, twenty twenty-three, ending July, June, the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Be it resolved by, by the Board of the County Commissioners of Polk County, Tennessee, assembled in a regular section, session on the twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three, that the amounts herea- hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of the various funds, departments, institution, offices and agency of Polk County, Tennessee, for the capital outlaid for the meaning of the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt material during the year beginning July the first, twenty twenty-three, ending June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, according to the following schedule.
Okay, the, uh, the first schedule is the general fund. The total general fund amount is ten million, five hundred nineteen thousand, nine ninety-five. The next fund is the sanitation fund with a total of seventy-nine-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-five. The next fund is the drug control with the total of forty-two thousand, five twenty-one. Uh, next is American Rescue Plan Act. Let's see, that's just an rescue, with a total, uh, amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Is that right? Okay, next is Highway to the Quirks. Total highway is three million, three oh six seventeen. Next general purpose school fund. Twenty-one million, three hundred forty thousand, four fifty-nine. This is school federal projects. One million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, nine sixty-one. Central cafeteria fund. One million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, one fifty-three. Debt service fund. Two million, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one seventy. General capital projects, this is on airport. Ten thousand, one twenty. Other capital projects funds. One hundred fifty thousand, eight seventy-five. Debbie, do you care to read that section two there?
No, this whole page.
Let's see, I'm, I'm.
Section.
Yeah, it's supposed to be section two eight, or two ten. Uh, yeah, if you don't hear.
Be it further resolved that there also hereby appropriated certain portions of the commission and fees for collecting taxes and licenses for administering other funds, which the trustee, county clerk, circuit court clerk, clerk and master, registrar and the sheriff and their officially authorized deputies and assistants may be entitled to receive under state laws heretofore, theretofore, to thereafter enacted. Expenditures out of commissions or fees collected by the trustee, county clerk, circuit court clerk, clerk and master, registrar and sheriff may be, for such purposes, in such amounts, may be authorized by existing law or by valid order or any court having power to make such appropriations. Any excess commission or fees collected over and above expenditures duly and conclusively authorized shall be paid over to the trustee and converted to the general fund as provided by law. Be it further resolved that any fee officials as enumerated in section eight twenty-two dash one oh one Tennessee code, uh, and I hate to say that, and on, and that, and that.
Annotated.
Annotated. Annotated, I always say that wrong. Operate under provisions of the section eight twenty-two dash one oh four, Tennessee code and that, how'd you say it?
Annotated.
Annotated. Okay, I need a lesson on that. Annotated. Provisions of the preceding paragraph shall not apply to those particular officials. Be it further resolved that any amendment to the budget, except for the amendments to the budget for funds under supervision of the director of school, may be approved as provided in section five dash nine four oh seven, Tennessee code. Annotated. Boy, man, that word. The director of schools must receive approval of the Board of Education for transfers within each major category of the budget and approval of both the Board of Education and Board of the County Commissioners for transfers between major categories as required by law. One copy of each amendment shall be filed with the county clerk, one copy which the chairman of the budget committee and one copy with each divisional or departmental head concerned. The reason for each transfer shall be clearly stated, however, this section shall in no case whatsoever be construed as authorizing transfer from one fund to the other, but shall apply solely to the transfers within a certain fund. Be it further resolved that any appropriations made by the resolutions which cover the same purpose or specific appropriation as made by the statute in order is made in lieu of, but not in addition to said statutory appropriation. The salary wages or remuneration of each officer, employee or agent of the county shall not be in excess of the amounts authorized by existing law and set forth in the estimate of expenditure which accompanies this resolution. Provided, however, the appropriations for such salaries, wages and other remunerate, remuneration hereby authorized shall in no case be construed as permitting expenditures for an office, agency, institution, division, department of the county. Such appropriations shall continue, shall constitute the limit to the expenditures of any item of appropriate appropriation shall in no instance be more than the amount herein appropriated for such item. Be it further resolved that any resolution may be hereafter be represented to the Board of County Commissioners, providing for appropriations in addition to those made of this budget, appropriation resolutions shall specifically provide sufficient revenue or other funds actually to be provided during the year in which the expenditure is to be made to meet such additional appropriation. Said appropriating resolutions shall be submitted and approved by the state director of the local finance and its adaption, its adoption, as provided by section nine twenty-one dash four oh three Tennessee code. I'll leave off that word. Be further resolved by the county executive and the county clerk are hereby authorized to borrow money on revenue anticipation notes. Provided such notes are first approved by the state director of local finance to pay for the expenses here, herein authorized until the taxes and other revenue for the year twenty-three, twenty-four have been collected. The proceeds of the loans of each individual fund shall not exceed sixty percent of the appropriations for each fund, for each fund, and shall be used only to pay the expenses and other requirements of the fund for which the loan is made. The loan shall be paid out of the revenue from the fund which the money is borrowed. The notes evidencing these loans authorized under this section shall be issued under the applicable section of Title IX, Tennessee code. Said notes shall be signed by the county executive and undersigned by the county clerk and shall mature, be paid in full without renewal, not later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Section seven, it be further resolved that the delinquent county property tax for the year twenty twenty-two and prior years and the interest and penalty thereon collected during the year of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four shall be apportioned to the various county funds according to the subdivision of the tax levy for the year twenty twenty-two. The clerk and master of the trustee are hereby authorized and directed to make such apportion accordingly. Be it further resolved that all of the encumbrant balances of the appropriations remaining in the end of the year shall out and be no further effect in the year of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the resolution and part of a resolution which herefore has been passed by the Board of County Commissioners, which in conflict with any provision in this resolution, be the same hereby repealed. Be it further resolved that the resolution shall make effect from and after its passage and the provision should be enforced from and after July the first, twenty twenty, twenty, July the first, twenty twenty-third. The resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of the Commission. Passed on this twenty-fifth day and then somebody else is reading my next. I stumbled through that one there.
Thank you, Debbie.
All words just looking assigned.
I have a motion to approve appropriations.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Trampel, second by Brooks. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan? Yes. John Kippenberger?
Yes. Motion approved. Adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Increase. Will you present this with a budget or are you satisfied that it is in compliance?
I have one fund I'm questioning, I don't know if Dr. John does, you know, gave them.
Yes.
And when the school initially gave us theirs, you know, their fund balance wasn't shown, which she knew that night that she would get it. She sent me some numbers today. One forty-one and one forty-three looked fine, but one forty-two just was crazy. I think she was working on it.
Yeah, she got it. She's kind of, she got, she burned her copy up, she got me seven copies and she burned the others and just made it. She said, take these in there and give them to her. These are, uh, well, it's the comment she's talking about, but I'm not quite sure how to go about this.
So, start there. You actually made that copy of the models you had.
Everything will be good, you know.
The budgets stay the same as the fund balance is very different, right?
We're all the same. I just know if we send it to the state, they'll back, they'll give it back.
Right.
The balance should be good. And it was just an adjustment on the fund balance.
Right.
The revenues and expenses, they just.
What, Jack, give us?
Yeah. Uh, no, we're gonna change the reservation. Yes. You first or I? Okay, we're going to move this budget to the end. And go on, that way they can resolve any issues, is that alright?
Yeah.
Alright, that's what we're gonna do. Okay. So, we will, somebody remind me to come back and actually do the budget, please.
I will.
You know. Okay, so we're going to go on to, uh, I said, we're gonna go to right back, Duptown Courthouse, that's Commissioner Brooks.
Uh, yeah, private act, uh, Duptown Courthouse.
Eric's still working on it, he keeps running stuff, it's getting worked out one time. And he's gonna come to our building committee meeting at the hospital and tell us where he's at on it. It's, uh, it's crazy stuff he's running into, nineteen, what was it, nineteen-ten when he was rolling?
Eleven.
Nineteen eleven, and every time he thinks he's about there, some other law or rule, you know, has to work around.
Yeah.
And it's not just simple as working around, it has to go through Danham and Duptown. You know, and everybody get back with it, so he's gonna come to our building committee meeting.
Next week.
When Mosh thinks he can be there, at about the hospital, and then we're gonna talk about that too. He's gonna bring something speed on the private act, but it is progressive, but.
When are y'all, when are you gonna say that?
We're gonna see how much.
Week, Thursday, 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 next week.
Yeah, I was just like, I'll work, someone need to table this to.
Yep, thanks, we.
Next.
And we're gonna discuss with the building committees.
Okay, so we will go to. Samantha, would you want to do yours now or you wanna go and add the seventeen?
No, they're all, they're seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah, so you don't wanna do nine?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna move on down to, uh, no, we're gonna move ten to twenty. Okay, we're gonna go to resolution surplus property on both the kitchen and the vehicles, and we're gonna put that under the same res- uh, same resolution number because they're both in Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
I talked to him about it today, so we're not gonna do a roll call, so practically the same thing. So this will be on the surplus property. Uh, you should have two different resolutions on the surplus. You make both number two pages long. Uh, I'm gonna try this, it's the resolution.
Seven three.
Seven three of twenty-three. And it is a resolution to discharge, discharge surplus property. Whereas the following listed properties have fulfilled its intended usage and longevity and service to the county of Polk and its continued usage has become suspect as to the expected outcome, with such properties being as follows, and you have kitchen equipment. Uh, you have, uh, let's see.
Cleaning.
Cleaning equipment.
Power equipment.
Power equipment, what's the next one, Debbie?
And then it just, it's miscellaneous, private, child expenditures, full of private expenditures, and bucket bags.
Okay, then you have vehicle, vehicle equipment. That's right. Now therefore been resolved by Polk County Commission meeting in irregular session is the, that's twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three, percent TCA five fourteen one oh eight, oh, one and two. Any other law of the state of Tennessee that proceedings properties, which are hereby deemed to be unusable and are surplus by the Polk County Commission, with such being made in any legal sale qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee code annotated or any other applicable law of the state of Tennessee, this resolution shall become effective on passage, whether by requiring it. And notation, it is coming, uh, vehicles, we will go back to the vehicle fund that's set up for vehicle use only. Do I have a motion? Make a vote.
Second.
I have a motion by Mosh, second by Trampel. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Farber?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yeah.
Kristy Harden? Yes. Kelly Morgan? Yes. John Kippenberger?
Yes.
And Smith and Trent? Yes.
Motion passes.
Danny, I will put them there on there. Yeah, still has Joe's name on there. So I'll let him know I would be putting his name on there.
Let's see.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Okay, now we have resolution subdivision regulations, county.
That was, uh, brought back from last month's agenda. You all wanted to, understood it to either talk or address the, uh, planning commission in regards to those right of ways.
On the right of way? Alright. Have you got anything to add?
Um, I did speak with, well, not only speak, but because I'd asked if, um, the subdivision regulation resolution needed to be approved or could be passed with the planning commission approved it, and they said if they didn't care if the commission passed it or not, the planning commission would take it up, so.
So we don't have to approve it? I mean, is that?
If, you also, like I said, there was, there was just a discussion last month, if you remember, I don't know what that was, and it was just to set aside as far as what of ROW the right of way actually was. So if the commission wants to let the planning commission take that up, take care of it, they said that they would move forward.
Okay.
I presented it last month, I did not, I didn't get a package, so I don't have it. If you go, somebody asked, I don't care to read it again.
Here you go.
Last month's.
Nope.
I don't have it.
Oh, it hadn't come in last month.
Yes, it was in last month's.
I don't have last month's with. I don't have last month? Watch that, it's got discovered.
Did they say they were gonna do it whether we have printed or not?
They said that they, that they could.
So what am I looking for? If.
And or, that they didn't care if it was. And, or, that they didn't care if it would pass on or through a resolution from the commission that they, that they agree. And what it is, is just establishing what the legal boundaries are for the right of way.
Robbie. You want to say it?
I'll let you.
Say it back, here it is.
You're gonna be telling me what's going on.
So this would be resolution seven four, correction.
Yes.
Resolution seven four twenty-three, a resolution to amend the subdivision regulations of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas authority granted to the TCA code section thirteen three four oh two allows the plating of the territory within the county, and whereas TCA section thirteen three dash four oh three authorizes amendments in the subdivision regulations, and whereas in accordance the TCA section thirteen three four oh three C, a public hearing was held prior to the adoption of the subdivision regulation amendment. And whereas the permanent easement standards chart in article six of the subdivision regulations requires clarification to the difference between one lot and two to five lots, and the article six of the subdivision regulations define an access as included is among lot flooding and easement therefore unnecessary for including lots with frontage on the other roads of the easement, now therefore be it resolved by the, uh, I see, that's the planning commission, by the planning commission that the Polk County subdivision regulations be amended as follows. Remove existing text from article six, section six, point one easement and replace it with the following. Easements having a minimal width of ten feet shall be provided where deemed necessary along each side or near a lot line for utility lines and underground mains and cables. Easements of the same or necessary greater width shall be required along the lines of or across lots where necessary for the extension of existing or planned utilities. Whereas a subdivision is traversed by water, water course, drainage way, channel, or stream, there shall be provided on both sides of the stormwater or drainage right of way of thirty feet from the rested vegetation line. Paradigm streets may be required by the planning commission in connection therewith. A permanent easement may be permitted under certain conditions, these easements shall meet the following minimum requirements and any special condition attached by the planning commission and requirements of the special conditions where the easement shall be placed on the final plat for recording. A permanent easement, private road serving one lot of or less than one acre shall have a required width of no less than twenty-five feet. However, the planning commission will require that the easement be increased to fifty feet in the case that the property is further subdivided in the future. There will be no road base required, must meet grade requirements in case road is developed in the future. A permanent easement serving in excess of one lot or more than one acre shall be required width of no less than fifty feet, however, the planning commission may require greater widths if necessary to meet any special conditions present on the plat. There will be no road base required, but it must meet grade requirements in case the road is developed in the future. Permanent easement providing legal access to more than five lots shall meet the private road standards established in article seven, street design requirements and thirteen improvement standards of the Polk County subdivision regulations. Permanent easement standard chart, the twenty-five or fifty feet right of way will, will still be part of the regulations, and when the easement exceeds the five lots required, six or more lots, it will have to be brought up to the current road standards. One lot, twenty-five foot right of way only requirement, as notes above. Two to five lots, fifty foot, fifty foot right of way only requirement, see notes above. Over five lot standards, fifty foot right of way and must meet count, current county road standards. Number of lots will be based on the lots exclusively accessed by the easement. Access is for the purpose of the easement, access will be defined as any property separate parcel that abuts only to the easement and does not have frontage on another road. As lots are added to the existing easement, the entire easement must meet current standard base on the new total number of properties within each lot. And the exclusive use of the easement at no time will be an easement to be approved without direct connection to a publicly maintained road. Now therefore be it resolved by the Polk County legislative body meeting in regular, or in irregular session on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, in Benton Courthouse.
You got anything else to present on it, Robbie?
No, sir, that's it.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Wanting to approve it, or accept it, or?
It's a resolution, it will approve.
Or do I make a motion to approve?
Same resolution.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, what, seven four twenty-three, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, seven four twenty-three, I have a motion, I have a second, uh, motion by Brooks, second by Mush, thanks. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yeah.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Debbie, can I get that back? You can check this out. Do you have a thing?
I'll have a, I've got to check that. Okay. Well, yeah. Uh, AC heat unit, vent elementary cafeteria. Is that you, James?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me tell you.
Alright.
And you all know, we never have problems, or usually don't. But our expenditures, revenues are the same. This software is not allowing us to add up the columns and fund balance, so she has worked all day with Heather. And, uh, we can't get that column to total out on paper. And I don't know what to do about it.
Well, now this told me, AC.
AC.
Oh!
They have it on yourself.
I, no, I'm here.
Yeah.
Hey!
Keep going.
We're up here, make it fast, bro. Well, that's what I'm dealing with, and crunch right there on the phone, I'm pretty sure, that I said things that I can't ever take back.
It's AC.
Okay, let's go back, sorry about that.
That's retrack.
I already buried my soul now. You know, all our secrets.
We're, we're good, we'll go back to that, but I know it's the AC heat unit, uh, vent elementary cafeteria.
What about it? I mean, what are you asking?
Well, what was y'all asking for on it? It's just on.
Yeah, somebody called and put it on the agenda, they put it on our agenda.
For the cafeteria?
Yeah.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, because you asking for us, I mean, that's.
So it's out of our funds, it's not any money from y'all, but anything over a certain amount, we have to bring.
We'd have to get approval, so.
We have to bring to you, our board is already.
I don't have anything, they just filed, they put it on.
There's, we don't have a resolution for it, but.
We, we don't have a resolution.
Okay.
Can we just make a motion to give him permission to spend?
To spend our.
Twenty-five thousand, I think we've done that before.
Yeah, is that, you don't have to have a resolution to show audit, uh, trees.
We don't do this, not as long as.
I don't, I don't have anything new.
So we generally don't, don't supply you with resolutions when we're there, but at a certain amount, we have to get your approval to spend.
It's how about the twenty-five thousand?
I make a motion to give a couple of cities permission to go forward with the heating there, probably.
For, for, we use our money.
With our own money.
Have a motion by Brooks, second by Mush, any discussion?
Well, not my own money.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
And I meant all that other stuff, I just threw it all away.
That's alright, we'll, we'll get to that here just.
Alright, no hurry, and she's coming, no hurry.
You're already hung, don't hurry.
You're not to pay us.
Alright, so that passed. Uh, next is library board appointment. Can I take?
We had one application that was brought in, that was Kiki Bitter, um, one-one-one Long Ridge Road.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
And we'll kind of make that recommendation for her to go on.
He, Tim gave me this one. Brought in, that I gave you today.
Kiki Bitter. Who else gave you one?
You have another one?
Tim, what he brought it to the office, it's actually me. So, he brought another, brought it to my office. I gave it to you today, John.
Oh, gee. Well, I did.
You came in my office.
I did? My application to watch you get it, I'm glad. They had a, uh, they had a, they had another letter with it and a recommendation letter as well.
Yeah, it's on, from your.
On the, on the pro parts of.
That's right there, no, you just went past it. Flip over one more.
So this one is who the board has accepted.
That's who they.
Okay, so it looks like the library board is, is requesting that Jackie Rogers be appointed to fill the vacant board, uh, in this slot by unanimous approval. Please accept our recommendation on approving Jackie Rogers to the Polk County Library Board. Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion, yes. I'll second, that's fine.
Motion to approve Jackie, is that right?
Yeah, so that's the, who the board wants.
Right, so we have motion by Trampel, second by Morgan, is that right, or is it the first?
No, it's fine, I can second.
Okay. How is this, Robbie, are you supposed to make a nomination on this board, or is this a request by the committee?
So it's my understanding, and that was, the application that was submitted to me was that lady saying that there was an opening from the library, and then she brought that into the office, her application.
Uh, I guess what I'm saying is, so, you have code, did who, who has to nominate, the board or you by code? That's what I'm, because I don't want to mess this up.
And I don't know, like I said, this was brought into the office and turned in. Kiki brought that in and said that there was an opening on the library board that she had seen to post it.
Okay, I, as it stands, I have a motion and a second for the requested one uh, front of the board, which is Jackie. Okay.
Which I turned mine in to Tim, so he brought me down after that.
Well, it's, okay. Go on, finish. I don't want to be, that's why I was trying to, I don't want to be, has to make the recommendation, that's what.
And that's why, on that application, and that's why she brought it to me, because on the application it says, turned in to me. So that was how come that one came to me.
Yeah, I don't have to do it, trust me.
But I, like, like I said, I didn't know there was anything out there until the resident brought it to me.
I know.
Okay.
I just get it, and I was like, okay, then let's put that on there.
Well, just to be sure, we're on his recommendation. And if it don't pass, we'll go on another recommendation, just make sure we're doing it right. Or I don't want to.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, because I don't know what else to do. Uh, you said what the name was?
Kiki.
Kiki Bitter.
Kiki Bitter.
Okay.
I'll just withdraw mine.
Okay, you've withdrawn yours, and I, and I thank you for that, because it, this couldn't cause any, I mean, this, you've done the best life.
It can cause.
It's there.
Okay, so, I have a motion to second, Miss Rogers, from the, the floor. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
And Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay.
At the where?
I was asked to do, so, sure.
No, I'm sorry, just let it.
Oh, that's fine.
Stay, stay tame, have to do.
No, I understand, I was, trust me, I understand, I didn't know where it went.
Yeah.
I didn't know where it went after it left my office, so I didn't know who you got what or this.
Okay, that's good care of it, that's great. Now, the hardest part is what we've never done. That's another good thing, okay, next is nine-one-one board resignation letter, can I take?
As always, I'd like for everybody to know what's going on, and we have accepted, or been given the resignation of Mr. Lautermil. Uh, this was, uh, this came to us, that he announced for the nine-one-one board that he would be resigning, this is Wayne Lautermil. So, he's done many years of service, but, uh, I'll also let everybody know at this time that we aren't accepting applications for the nine-one-one board, so if you know somebody that is looking to serve, someone by the office picked up an application.
Not by guess, you're here.
See, the nine-one-one is, I guess, basically.
And the way it sits.
No question on nine-one-one.
Correct, and the way it sits right now, I know different ones are asked, different one has three on the board. District two has one on the nine-one-one board. District three has three on the nine-one-one board, and district four has one on the nine-one-one board. And it is a ten-person board, so this is one, one position.
So two has one, and four has one?
Yes.
So does it come from two or four?
District one and.
I'm not.
Do what, Samantha?
I asked Jackie which one she lived in, so she's gonna be on a.
Yeah, district one and, district one and district three have three.
Yeah, so there's not many too many in the.
District two has one, and district four has one.
You're.
Current. We just try to keep them spread, and so, that's like before, up till what, about two months ago, district two didn't even have any representation. And so right now you have three people in one, three people in three, one in four, and one in two.
No, he's done. He's not here, he's in district two. You will take those applications, having trouble with them next month.
Yes, they'll be, they'll be for next month.
Okay, so took care of that resolution, copper basin, district, I see, though, that's a two by. Alright, what about the copper basin utility district, Robbie, you've got something on it?
I do know about the copper basin utility district, so there was a whole lot of confusion as far as different things on the agenda, but that is. Make sure to be right there. So, this is what Eric, if you remember back a couple of months ago, maybe even about a year ago, it was in regards to some, is it a line mush that runs around through the industrial park? That is copper basin utilities, it was put in years ago, and this is to establish that easement, if I'm not mistaken,
with, with the copper basin utility district.
You wanna read that one, John?
Yeah, if you don't care.
This will be resolution seven five. Resolution seven five twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and approving the conveyance of a permanent public utility easement across the property identified as exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference to the copper basin utility district, and two, authorizing the county executive to execute a permanent public utility easement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, to copper basin utility district. Whereas copper basin utilities district has an existing sewer line that crosses a portion of the property in the copper basin industrial park on the Polk County, Tennessee. And whereas copper basin utility district doesn't have a written permanent public utility easement for the sewer line. And whereas copper basin utility district desires to obtain a written permanent public utility easement and is required that Polk County, Tennessee, convey a permanent public utility easement across the property identified as exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference to copper basin utility district. Whereas copper basin utility district has agreed to pay all expenses related to obtaining the permanent public utility easement, now therefore be it resolved that this legislative body in session assembled that one, conveyance of the public permanent utility easement across the property identified exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein in reference to copper basin utility district is authorized and approved. And two, the county executive is authorized to execute a permanent public utility easement on behalf of Polk County, the copper basin utility district. Therefore be it resolved that this resolution take effect in front of this, and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it on this the twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approves every by twenty-three.
Do I have six? Have a motion by Brooks, second by Harden.
To the office, to approve seven five twenty-three.
Is this going to be with darts and stuff?
No, my understanding, this is just what is on the land at the industrial park.
Line, it goes across sewer line, couple of, going to the plant. And if something happens and we don't have easement, we can't even work on it, get bursted, we can't even work on it.
Okay.
The line was put in years ago.
Is this the line right here? This dark one?
Mm-hmm.
You satisfied Samantha?
Yeah, that's right. I just said, I.
Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
I'll play it.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Where do we want to start back at, Samantha? Which one do you want to address first?
Uh, well, since Robbie put them on there, Robbie can read them.
Well, that's a good, but which one would you like to come to read first?
Seventeen.
What?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, that will be, resolution, copper basin industrial park. Oh, we should have a good order of the bus on that, you could read that.
Which one?
Uh, seventeen.
Seventeen, it's about here.
She is probably not.
So this is seven, six, yeah, twenty-three, correct. Like I said, some of these came about, I think this came about through the, uh, budget meeting that we'd had that night on behalf of the commission, and Eric got these in and did put them underneath my name. I know I've had a lot of people call, I just want to make it sure that that's heard, um, whenever you're on the beach in Panama, and everybody won't know what's going on, you're like, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda away for just a little while, but that's, these are from Eric, that was through that meeting. Resolution, amending the previous resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of a certain property in the Benton Industrial Park and Copper Basin Industrial Park to the Polk County Industrial Corporation, NKA, Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation. Whereas the county commission previously passed a resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of certain property in the Benton Industrial Park and Copper Basin Industrial Park to the Polk County Industrial Corporation, NKA, Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation. Wherefore, the county has transferred some property in the above referenced industrial park to the Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation, but the county still owns the property in both industrial parks. Whereas the county commission desires to amend the said resolution regarding the remaining property in the industrial parks owned by the county. Now therefore be it resolved by this legislative body in session and assembled that the previous resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of certain property in the Benton Industrial Park and the Copper Basin Industrial Park to the Polk County Industrial Corporation, NKA, Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation is amended as follows. The Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation shall provide a written request detailing the property. It is requested to be transferred to the Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation, and the purpose of the transfer shall include a copy of the written offer to purchase from the prospective purchaser. If the purpose of the transfer is to sell the property to the county commission for preliminary approval, which approval may be withheld in its sole discretion. The remaining property in the industrial park shall be used for industrial or commercial purposes only, and shall be specifically restricted against being used for a residential purpose as a landfill or for bio-solids. Upon obtaining preliminary approval from the county commission, the county, the Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation shall have the requested property survey and complete any other requirements contained in the preliminary approval from the county commission. Upon receiving the completed survey and completing all or other requirements, if any, the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation shall submit the survey and any required documentation for information to the county commission for final approval, which approval may be withheld in its sole discretion. Upon obtaining final approval from the county commission, the county attorney shall prepare a quick claim deed for the transfer to be executed by the county executive on behalf of the Polk County, Tennessee, and shall record the survey and quick claim deed from Polk County, Tennessee to the Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation, subject to all the above referenced restrictions at the registered deeds office in Polk County, Tennessee. And the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation shall be responsible for all expense, cost, fees associated with any transfer, be it further resolved that this resolution take effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it on this the twenty-fifth day of July, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Approved by Trant. Sir, have a second, I'm lost. That was resolution seven six.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Any discussion?
I know, but, so you, Derek, you.
Very, very, very.
Derek, you. Did you have anything you wanted to address on this, uh, I know you're, you're chair of IDA.
Yeah, so, uh, first initial concern, I hear Benton and Ducktown properties, the only property I'm aware of in Benton is under contract and the sale's in process. I'm not real sure how we transfer that between two entities when we've already agreed to sell that land. So that, most likely will be a major issue. Uh, and then, second, I'm really confused of how we've had land for four years, we've sold a large portion of that, returned it to the natural and Ducktown portion of the industrial park, and now we're going to take it back, the board has to get it back again, survey it, pay that expense. It just seems like we're spending good money after that. I don't think anybody has reservations about putting restrictions on bio solids or landfills on it.
It's real concerning to me that Buddy Haynes has a friend that's looking at it and wanted to put a house on it and have agriculture and stuff like that. So if you don't think that's concerning, after dealing with what we're dealing with, we do have a problem.
So i- if you'll come to the meeting, that we have every month.
Oh, we're gonna be there.
But here's one, let me finish. So, we at the last meeting said we have two rulings that said no residential sales inside the industrial park. That's been clear. I've been clear, obviously been at the meetings where we've said, with that ruling, I can't be, and I don't think anybody in the board's in favor of selling for residential. There's, uh, Mr. Frank Russell, who's approached the board numerous times to buy land that, if it's legal, we have to go back to Mr. Russell first and say, you've asked for years to buy a land, and we continue to tell you no. So, I think we share the same concerns, it seems like we're trying to get to the same point in completely different ways.
I, well, the problem as I see it is this, if you don't have written restrictions, you don't have any. So say you pass whatever.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I think that's a problem.
It's kinda hard for us to backtrack once this time.
Yeah, let's say you, you guys don't care. The county's still not protected.
I don't think anybody here said that the industrial one doesn't care.
I said, if you said, you didn't care.
Absolutely.
The county is not protected because there are no written regulations. So I think all she's asking for is written regulations.
Yeah, and if, if somebody would ask industrial, we'll be happy to put those restrictions on.
We've asked for a lot and haven't got it. We're, we're in huge concern about who sits on that board.
Okay.
Let me, did I understand, you say you asked for that?
We've asked for Buddy Haynes to resign. We have a huge issue with this, this is someone, if someone is trying to.
Let me, let me say something. You're the one that's pushing all this. We cannot, you can ask for him to resign, but we cannot kick him off the board or ask him to resign. He has not violated our code or anything.
And you can't tell us that we can't do this.
They can dissolve the board if they want to, they do the county commission.
But, you do it, because when we started this board, all of us volunteered, you people are being paid to be on the county commission.
Okay.
We volunteered to do this for the good of the county. We're not paid anything, we didn't ask for anything, the one thing that we may, wanted to make sure is that when we do something like this, that it is done for the good of the county, and we don't have to have it approved by the county commission. That's where y'all are trying to take back over and step back where you control everything.
So what you're saying is you shouldn't have any rules, that you should just be free to just do whatever you want to do.
No, you're the one that's running your mouth on all this stuff.
That is inappropriate.
That is inappropriate, and, uh, it needs to.
No.
We vote for her, we do not vote for you. Let's make that abundantly clear.
So, this ain't gonna get out of hand, and this is getting just a little too much. Derek, which one, one back? I, I will, uh, business man.
Uh, no, you sit down.
Wait, just a second, just a second, I, I will call on you in just a second, I promise, trust me, I'm not about to not call, you know. I'm afraid of, okay, so just, give me a second. All right, so, that being said, I was at the meeting, I was at the meeting, and they did bring up the residential. It did come up as one of the two options on the purchase of the land. And they did make it very clear that they would not consider the residential part here.
But so, we're gonna let him come in with all of his, uh, agriculture that he's got going on?
I'm just addressing the residential part.
No. We're not.
They did make it very clear that they would not hear of a residential house on the property, that I was there.
There, there has not been a motion to the board to buy this land, there's been an offer.
There was all, two offers.
We said, we said we would absolutely have to verify the ruling, which we've had from Eric, that said we can't have residences inside the industrial park. They've been sold in the past, we can't change that, we don't want to make two wrongs to try to make the right. So, I don't think the board would have any problem denying that application if we have the ruling that says it's illegal to have residents inside that industrial park. That's why we didn't sell to Mr. Russell. We continued to say that that's not legal, the advice of the attorneys, it's not legal, and we've not sold that. So, we've not been asked to put any restrictions, and this week's the first time I heard a bio solid or landfill in that industrial park. So we'll be happy to put those restrictions on that land, don't think there's any problem there.
Can I just say something real quick, Georgia has bio solids under agriculture, again, we need restrictions on this, and that's why they slid it in there, that's exactly what he's looking to do there. And I, that is why they're trying to do this here, create this, they had it come in under agriculture, actually took them three years to get the governor to finally sign on. And it had to go through and they had to create restrictions, so if you do it now, we won't have to fight that battle. We won't talk about spending money, that's gonna spend a lot of money.
I'll make a substitute motion to do this and take Benton out of it, since our current end negotiations with people on the Benton property, and it's applied just to the east end, A V board, I think that's a compromise at this point for everybody right now.
Okay, I have a motion to, uh, addendum to the, my own motion, I have a second from Brooks's addendum.
So I'll second.
You have a, a second by Trant? All right, uh, one thing real quick, Ms. Trant, I'm back in the back, was, is that good?
Yeah.
Would you want to address, I told you I'd call back on you before I went hard.
Uh, the reason I think that the board shouldn't have so much control is because the community voted that board right there. And that's the board that the community should go to if they have an issue of how things are being sold, who they're being sold to, all that. It shouldn't matter, this, this little board right here should determine for the whole county. It should be the people that's elected to make those decisions.
You're right. Thank you, uh, we're, uh, no further questions, we're gonna take care of this business real quick. First, we are voting only substitute motion, if this passes, it'll go in as a primary motion. So this will be Brooks pulling out Benton from the original motion, setting his side. Okay, so it'll just be above the mounts, Greg, Greg, on the original, okay, does everybody understand, this is pulling Benton out of the original motion. Everybody clear?
Clear.
Roll call please.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Okay, that goes into the original motion, so now the original motion, Samantha, would you restate your, your motion? It was to.
Oh, I did, I second Brooks, it's fine to take them out.
You did, we, okay, so your original motion was to bring the property back for us to have finalization, correct?
Yes.
On the east side, that was what.
Through the resolution, minus being.
Yes.
Okay, uh, everybody clear on the resolution, or the motion that we're voting on? Roll call please.
Who's second?
Uh, it goes back to the original, it'd be, uh, Mush and Samantha, or Samantha and Mush, I'm sorry.
Okay. Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan. John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Motion passes. Okay, Ms. Trant, do you have anything, you had seventeen and eighteen, do you have anything else on eighteen?
No.
That, that's part of seventeen. So we're gonna go to ten, which is twenty.
Uh, this was part of, this is that pilot program.
The pilot.
The pilot, which is, which one now, is that just eighteen?
Yeah.
Pilot. Okay, do you want to present, uh, you want Robin to present it?
Yeah.
Robin, uh, you wanna present, you wanna write your name there?
Once again.
I understand.
I just want to make it clear that this is another one that came as a result from the, yeah. So this is, or will be, seven, seven. Twenty-three, correct? Is that right, Jackie?
Yes.
Seven, seven, it's eighteen.
Those of y'all that couldn't see Jackie's face at that time.
And Eric, I just wanna say this, Eric wrote it like exactly how every single one of us agreed on it.
Correct.
Exactly every single one of us.
I will agree with that, that was talked about in our budget meeting at night. Resolution, seven dash seven dash twenty-three. A resolution establishing the procedure for the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation to request the formal delegation of authority to negotiate and enter into pilot agreement. Whereas, the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation desires to have the ability and authority to negotiate and enter into payment into payment in lieu of taxes or quote-quote pilot agreements with companies providing for the acceptance and waiver of the payment in lieu of taxes. Whereas, the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation must obtain a formal delegation of authority from the Polk County, from Polk County, Tennessee, before it is authorized to negotiate and enter into pilot agreements with companies providing for the acceptance and waiver of the payment in lieu of taxes. Whereas, the county commission desires to establish the procedure for the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation to request the formal delegation of authority from the county. Now therefore be it resolved by this legislative body in session and assembled that the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation must do the following to request the formal delegation of authority from Polk County, Tennessee to negotiate and enter into pilot agreements with companies for acceptance and waiver of a payment in lieu of taxes, subject to final review and approval by the county commission. A, the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation shall have a formal written pilot application and packet prepared to present to the county commission for approval, which approval may be withheld in its sole discretion. B, the pilot application and packet shall establish the ability, the eligibility requirements, information and documentation required to be submitted by the company, policies, procedures, and fee schedule regarding the pilot program in Polk County, Tennessee. Once the pilot application and packet are approved by the county commission, the pilot application and packet shall be provided to and completed by companies interested in applying for the, for and. in applying for the, for and obtaining a pilot agreement. Companies shall submit the completed pilot application and others required the information and documentation to Polk County Industrial Economic Development Corporation for review and approval. If the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation approves the pilot application, it should be submitted, it shall submit the pilot application and other required information and documentation to the county commission for preliminary approval, which approval may be withheld in its sole discretion. If the county commission's preliminary approval of the pilot application, the county commission shall provide the formal delegation of authority for the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation to negotiate and enter into a pilot agreement with the company for the acceptance and waiver of payment in lieu of taxes, subject to the requirement that the pilot agreement and other documentation be submitted to the county commission for final review and approval, which approval may be withheld in its sole discretion. No member of the board of the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation shall prepare the pilot application and packet, nor any other pilot documentation, and the Polk County Industrial and Economic Development Corporation shall be responsible for and shall promptly pay all expenses, costs, and fees incurred by Polk County Tennessee related to the pilot program. Be it further resolved that this resolution take effect from this and after its passage in the public welfare requiring it on this the twenty-fifth day of July of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I have a motion.
I can motion to approve.
My motion is approved by Trantum?
Sure.
And that was seven, seven? Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna talk. So, I, I'm in agreement with this. I talked to Derek for a long time last night and I said since day one that anything that affects our tax rate as a county, which we are responsible for setting, should include a conversation. And we agreed on just about everything that we talked about last night. So, I don't think any of this is unreasonable. And as far as I know, there's never been a resolution officially found setting up that board since the seventies. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but no one's ever been able to produce that.
No, the board was set up in eighty-one.
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's not been a new one amended since the eighties. Right, okay. So, a lot's changed since then, which means you need some kind of guidelines that's changed along the way too. So, I think this is a great starting point. But what I've also said, and I said at the budget meeting too, is that any board that we appoint, there has to be a working relationship with, which starts with communication. And so, I would like going forward that we come to the table and talk about and discuss things together in a normal, professional manner, that will make us all happy. In a way, because we as the county commission has to look at the bigger picture and look at the county as a whole versus just the business that's coming in. So, I think this is a great starting point to move forward.
I don't think we have any pushback from the board. We already have application process in process, and we can't even outline and all that. She's working on the current pilot agreement, so we agree with that. The only thing that I felt like might not be accurate is the fee structure. Typically, we pass that fee on to the business that's applying instead of the board paying that fee. So, that one maybe needs to be negotiated a little bit, so I think we're certainly open for two-way communication, we wanna do that.
Overall, we're in agreement, correct?
Why could y'all not make an information meeting?
We could meet as quickly as Thursday night's our next scheduled meeting or we could call a working session anytime between either next Thursday night or immediately following the following.
So when will Ginger have the applications?
I'll have to call her tomorrow and see where she is on that process, I haven't talked through this week.
I just think we need to have some kind of guidelines for the maximum, you know what I'm saying? As far as the different types of industries was different.
We're not opposed to that, the board has already discussed. We had a lot of learnings out of the first pilot agreement we did. And we've already discussed that we wanted to pass a resolution as a board taking the school tax off the table.
Right.
That we could not agree on pilot without the company agreeing to pay the school tax portion. So, we think there's some reasonable concessions that we know and the board, the commission would agree on. I think we just need to sit down and talk through those.
Agreed with all that. Does that, does that work with everybody? To proceed with what we have in writing and then we'll tweak the patents.
Any other discussion? I still have my motion second, correct? Okay, roll call.
Keith Barker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Hi.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
mush Davis?
Yeah.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So I don't need to do anything as far as no decision, okay?
John, wait, can you read the budget, so crazy, I'm going.
Sure. And what I was, what I asked you about earlier, in just a minute. Next to me, the budget document. We've done the tax rate, we've said it, we've done appropriations, you know what's going for each section.
That's what I understood to go over what Ginger, she said that she was getting together applications.
The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Y'all have a copy, do we have a copy with the final numbers?
Is that what these were handed out, right?
I have the final.
No.
Tonight?
Oh, yeah, yes, school, but she's gonna go back and tweak, because one forty-two is still not showing up on her balance.
So it's not correct?
It's going to be.
It's going to be correct.
Before I send it, but I figured it wrote it in and the, the one forty-two was just, was doing every single thing and I've collapsed it to finally found where it's now eight pages instead of eighty-six. So, we've written down the fund balance and stuff in one forty-two, but one forty-one, one forty-three, and one seventy-seven is correct.
They're all good.
Just the one forty-two.
One forty-two is the one you're, you are wanting to print.
And I have, well, I've got some extra copies, but, um, everything else in there is correct.
Except one forty-two.
Her revenues and expenditures are not gonna change, which is what I made. But I, I need that fund balance showing up at the end of the state, so she's, if y'all are okay, she's gonna go fix that for me so I can get it sent in tonight.
So what is the fund balance for one forty-two?
Um, the fund balance will be six oh five, two thirty-three, yeah.
Six oh five, two thirty-three, that's on one forty, that's on one forty-two. All the rest have been printed and it's what we have a copy of, and you have a copy of the newest?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to adopt next year's budget, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, as presented to the county clerk. Have a motion? Have a motion by mush. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Trantum. And that's with the understanding that one forty-two will be finalized by the school and a copy given to the county clerk.
Yes.
The full completion. And then our understanding is that the one forty-two is six oh five, two thirty-three.
Correct.
No number up here. Any discussion? And we have a promise by Dr. Jones that this will not change. Any discussion? At all. Roll call.
Keith Barker?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Danny Carver?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
mush Davis?
Yes.
Kristy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Pippinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approved. And just for everybody to understand, a copy is on file, which we have to put that will be the official copy until the revision change. You also have a copy that was mailed out. Minus the three funds that come in from the school today. Everybody's good. All minus clear.
Why did I stop that one there?
And I was gonna ask Samantha, you have one more, so. Let's have it. Or you want Robby to read, you want Brooks to read it?
Brooks is gonna read it for me.
Okay.
But I have a few things to say before we, before we read it. Um, this is an injunction, a request that I have spoke to Eric about. Um, once, you know, we pass it for him to do it, then that's where it goes. Um, we've had our town halls, we've had everything, you know, we've begged for help. T-Dex don't help us, so, um, we're to the point to where we have to do something. So this is an injunction request for all production to stop. Cease at Copper Hill Industries, that includes, um, Buddy, that includes Copper Hill Industries, that's gonna include Denali, that will include, um, Intertrade Holding, all of those, since Intertrade Holding is now thinks that it is a great idea to blast on top of landmines. So, I guess that's not something that really studied. I have my personal opinions about that one. Um, so we did a, uh, we've talked to many, many people, um, in environmental groups, a lot of people, actually. Uh, so many that my brain hurts and, um, we have, uh, come up with this injunction relief that we are fixing to give Eric. Um, we are also going to give Eric a change of venue for when this does go to court because we feel like Bradley County is also affected with this. So we do not want court in Bradley County. Uh, we, we don't care as long as it doesn't have any conflict of interest because this water does affect Bradley County, so therefore it is a conflict of interest. So venue cannot be in Bradley County once this does go to court. So this is the injunction for this, um, we need a lot of testing, um, we want, we want a third-party tester for all of this stuff. Um, the ones that we've got, I mean, you know, we've asked multiple times. I, I asked the other day, um, one buddy invited us over to, to come tour. Um, I asked to do that on a Saturday because of course, I mean, I work, I work, I work in healthcare. This is not something that I can just say, hey, I'm gonna take off today to go smell some bio solids. Um, so he, at first he didn't wanna do it, but then he come back and said that was fine. Um, I also asked to take my good friend Glenn because he's the one that produces the most paper at our house. No offense, Walter, we do enjoy your paper, we do love you. Um, he denied that request, which is fine, whatever. Um, but I, I, when I asked for a third-party tester, he said it had to go through his protocols. Um, so here we are, injunction relief. This, uh, I, will be sent to Eric, Eric is aware of it, I did talk to him the other day. Uh, Greg is going to read this, this actually comes from an environmentalist, so, um, Greg, if you don't care, will you read this for me, please?
Hurry, hurry, I know everybody wants to get out of here. Petition for injunction relief claims of Polk County, Tennessee. When it comes to impact of environmental factors on quality of life, public health, clean air, clean water, and preservation of our community, there are several laws, regulations which Polk County seeks immediate injection relief until such problems can be remedied and environmental impact study on air, water, soil, and public health is completed. We ask this in order to protect the environment and mitigate any adverse effects on human health and well-being. Test should include but not be excluded the toxic characteristic bleaching procedure, TCLP acronym, and priority fluid test under the Clean Water Act. Additionally, we seek minority protection and status as per the EPA EJ screening map under poverty and elderly. This area is seventy-eighth percentile, this area is seventy-eighth percentile under the poverty category and eightieth in the elderly category. Number one, Clean Water Act, also mentioned by EPA, this law seeks to restore and maintain chemical, physical, and biological integrity of a nation's waters that regulates discharge of pollutants into water bodies and status water quality standards for protecting aquatic ecosystems of human health. One A, current past mining along with the fractured nature of granite rock generates concerns of potential contamination and nor current contamination of the aquifer. Number one, section B, May the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Resident video taken in front of Copper Hill Industries revealing that runoff from the parcel is going into a irrigation ditch and two culverts running under the road directly in an oak oil with no filtration system present. Number two, Resource Conservation Recovery Act. This federal law governs the management of hazardous and non-hazardous solid waste. It regulates the generation, transportation, treatment, storage, and disposal of waste to ensure that this is managed in an environmentally sound manner, thus minimizing the potential impact on communities and ecosystems. The empirical evidence flow in the dimension of improperly managed transportation is regularly monitored by locals with tarps rather than sealed containers. According to EPA Bio-3 rules, trucks must, trucks, trucks must, trucks transporting Class B bio solids must remain sealed during transportation. Section eight, the weight capacity is not the only problem. Please save many of the trucks they pulled over linking bio solids in the back, which goes against Georgia state regulations. There's a link on here to a news story on Channel nine. Section B, May the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. The weight capacity is not the only problem, please save many of the trucks they pulled over linking bio solids in the back, which goes against Georgia state regulations. Section two, Mackay's will please chief Michael Early stops two autonomous transport trucks from being overweight for the Fighting Town Creek Bridge. Drivers admit they knew they were in the wrong by traveling the route, but had been told to do so because of the odor of their cargo, human waste. Section C, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. The casual police and the Georgia Motor Carrier Compliance Division stopped autonomous transport, transport trucks that had crossed the Fighting Town Creek Bridge. The trucks cannot be cited for being overweight because weight limit signs have mysteriously disappeared from the bridge. The M.C. C.D. officer discovers nine violations, issues one warning, one citation. Estimated weight of loads the trucks were carrying is twenty tons. Section D, additional video. Residents continue to post videos on Facebook of improperly sealed trucks with tarps lined Class B bio solids to exit into the roads. Number three, air nuisance. The blow empirical evidence demonstrates well-documented testimonies of intrusive harmful national ambient air quality standards amid by bio solids submitted by Denali at Copper Hill Industries as the school year after approaches, approaches of COVID is already proven. Is our belief, is that right? Is our belief our quality standards are not only inferior learning, but also the quality of life and our quality, and our quality of virtue. Additionally, documented blow residents are subjected directly to the future smell and poor air quality in the daily activities. Section eight, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. It was revealed the use of bio solids waste from city of Chattanooga mocks the main waste treatment plant was being used as fertilizer for the land reclamation process being done by Copper Hill Industries. They had been a previously unidentified source of foul odor impacting the area for weeks. Section two, Buddy Haynes owner of Copper Hill Industries said... Section two, Buddy Haynes owner of Copper Hill Industries said, I just didn't realize extending the problem with odor. He promised to make changes and had told Copper Hill's mayor and TDEC he would keep a check on the odor. B, August tenth, twenty twenty-two, Copper Hill Industries invited officials and community leaders to tour Copper Hill Industries. Section two, Part B, section two. Ceramic is later identified as the project manager for the bile solid works and rain causes more odor. Sex, B, section three. Clean dialing of Denali water solutions emits an odor will always be present during the use of bile solids because it's part of the natural cycle. Section C, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Part one, the stench is so bad, recess is not officially canceled. The copper basin elementary school, the principal Jessica Nigbert tells the news observer, the children have been so uncomfortable because it smells so bad, they don't wanna be outside. It's even so unpleasant in the hallways, kids are walking around with their noses covered. It smells terrible inside the school as well. Section two, Haynes responded, we did a small spread on the left side of property to test odor when daily highs are in the forties or less. We have not received any new material, I do have to deal with what's here. Section D, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Police Chief Early and residents of Copper Hill reports stench from bile solids from Copper Hill Industries has returned. Section eight, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. A resident from the Coltown area reports late that night bile solid smells back. Section F, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Recorded, one sixteen oh one. And Buddy Haynes will tell you, I was the very first person to call him and say, hey, what's going on, or something has died in our city. At the same time, we have problems at school, we thought was a sewer line had busted. So every time there's an odor, I call and say, hey, it's bad today. But on two, if we, but on two, if we have an event at school and it's going to be outside, I'm at the elementary school, I call and say, hey, we're having graduation, we're having outside. You know something, and he says, I won't move it those days, I won't move it that way. I guess that's.
That was from our mayor of Copper Hill.
Oh, that's Blacker, that's cool.
Um, I'd like to add too, this is gonna include atomic because they are also nuisance as well, so. This will go to Eric. Um, we have to pass this in order for it to go to Eric, so.
Well, those atomic trucks aren't completely sealed, but what I followed going yesterday, it would take your breath. You start sounding awful, I have to, I wouldn't even follow. They have the tar cover, but there's that much open on top of the door.
Oh.
In Sinagro, the Scott Chattanooga, do you know who owns them? Goldman Sachs.
Mm-hmm.
You, and the rumor is that Buddy bought the rock up there, where was he gonna put the church?
No. But he's also trying to, like, get a permit, which we are working on as well, but this is gonna cease production of this because it's an infraction because, um, with the way that it ha, it has in this, um, mining, I mean, it has to pass a compression test.
Yeah.
Our whole, everything, like, even our schools is on top of the mine, so, I mean, my concern is if you start blasting, these kids are at school. What's gonna happen?
You, you probably don't remember it, but Ronnie Blue died in that night. He was up there, up in the roasters up there, the old roasters, on a bulldozer. They were moving dirt, it caved in. Went upside down, followed that old shaft in there.
Mm-hmm.
Some of those old mining engineers drug out some old mouths, and they climbed shelf for days up there with a crane. And finally found you, upside down, dead. And they said if it went just a little further, it would fell in a shaft, and they would never drug up your mouth.
They'd never get the.
Like I said, the ground is hollow, some of those shabs are three thousand feet deep.
Mm-hmm.
And people won't listen.
Yeah.
He won't listen. He doesn't need eight-year contract to haul poop in up there to reclaim land. The land was reclaimed in itself and doing a good job at it. We don't need Buddy Haynes or none of that Alabama gang here. That's all it is, it's about money, money for money.
So with this infraction though, they have to, they have to pass these tests that we ask for?
Well, maybe he'll be on top of that when it goes down. Him and Denali and Sinagro and every one of them, Al Heffner and this whole country, Rick, check on Alabama and see what they done. I've got it in the truck. The Sinagro has the train, they have their own train, and do you know they're already cleaning the track slot over there?
Hold, hold on just a second, we need to get.
Go up in, go up in the plant, look in, when you cross the bridge, look, they killed all the Hudson, and the train has been in there, I looked at it the day. And why is G, what is it, G D O, G H D? Why so many vehicles going in up there crossing the funeral home with Texas tags, Michigan tags?
That's probably where they're trying to get their, um, permits and my grant.
There's there are four different companies, and there's more behind that fence than we know about, I can tell you that.
Well, this, this halts production for all of it once it goes to the court?
No, it does.
It will be everything that happens on that company.
Maybe you'll go up on that church and get forgiveness.
So, uh.
But I doubt it.
I have a motion by Trantle for the injunction is oh seven, oh eight, twenty-three, does that sound right? Okay.
Seven A.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna, okay. I have the motion by Trantle, six, I'm those states. Now, any discussion, yeah, it's open for discussion now, anybody's got anything else? We gotta suspend the rule on one, two items real quick, and put, uh, any other?
If the, uh, the people who use the rivers nationwide come here and they find out they're shitting the river, they're not gonna come.
That's true.
Those are, that's where most of our, uh, revenue comes from, that's.
From tourism, that's our biggest.
Nobody wants this, nobody.
So hopefully this will do help us, so.
And that train will come through Benton too, pick them from Chattanooga, update the wall, and ride on around the loop and back into Copper Hill.
And I wanna thank our county commissioners and our press that are here that have been so supportive. You guys have gone through a lot and we, we really appreciate you, so thank you for sticking by us.
Well, that brings up, uh, I'd like to address Mr. Allen right quick. Glenn, you've seen this from the start, Rick, you've seen it from the start, and a couple more. Do you know anything this commission done has passed up on opportunity to help on this? I, I'd like to address something, I don't do Facebook, I think it's silly for an adult, you know, you don't have better things to do. But you get stuff done by sticking to get, and I was sending several screenshots of you bashing this commission, saying we weren't doing everything we could, said we didn't follow through, no, him. You didn't follow, we didn't follow through with our, what we call a resolution ordinance, ordinance? I mean, why would you do that? We've got people born and raised here, that's here way before you, that knows what we've done since this has started. And, I mean, I've seen the screenshots, so you can't deny it.
I'm not denying anything, matter of fact, I'm the one who put together the protest.
I know, but you still got on there after we did everything we could do to support this, and you got on there and said to county commission, lied to y'all about we couldn't pass an ordinance, and we could. I got the screenshots, is your name Allen? Last name?
It's William Allen.
Okay.
That's you.
I got the screenshots on the phone, people saying.
Petition that has over three hundred people that I went out personally, I petitions for. Right, what's that called, that's his question?
This has, I'm asking you, why did you put on Facebook that we're not doing everything we can and we could have passed an ordinance and we failed to?
I thought there was a possible way to put an ordinance in places to stop.
Have you ever thought about asking us or accepting our answer after all the effort we put in this and people tell you we had it?
You quoted a bad section of law for this county.
And then somebody from Florida backed you up, of course, and said, well, in Florida, well, we ain't in Florida, we're in Hope County, Tennessee.
You quoted charter counties, Hope County is not a charter, it's a Class A county, it's not a charter county, it's not Class B.
Be homework, when somebody's trying to.
Charter counties have nothing to do with the. That's my mistake, I apologize for it, I'm sorry. I've been doing everything I could in my power to help out, I put the petition together.
And we got called out, not hitting.
May I speak?
Say what?
May I speak?
What? Are you gonna address this?
I just wanna say, I apologize if I did anything wrong with the Facebook page. I thought that you could pass an ordinance because there are other places that do pass.
What you told me is that by charter, can't you blame them?
That's true.
All right, go ahead.
Now, I also have put together the protest here last week that was on television, that got everybody together, and I passed out a hundred flyers, we get about thirty people. I also put the petition together, which has about three hundred fifty people, I've been to the folks, the Mackayville, I've been to Copper Hill, and I've been to the Duck Town town hall meetings.
We appreciate all that.
May I also, I also have signatures from everybody in the Mackayville County Com, the Town Hall Commission, including the chief of police has signed the petition, and that's what I was gonna present to you today. But if I am doing anything to stop what you guys are doing, I apologize and I, I promise I won't get involved anymore if I'm doing anything.
We appreciate what you're doing, just don't let them mind us for trying to help you.
I appreciate that.
I mean, that's been our mission, by the way.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Can, can I make a comment that, you know, so people don't misunderstand? What my, sorry, Jack. What bothered me was somebody on your board telling our board, we gotta fire somebody, kick him off our board.
We didn't tell you had to, we just asked you to remove him if you have grounds.
We don't have grounds, that's the thing.
And, and women even asked you to do that, I sent him a letter requesting his resignation because his actions don't coincide with the wishes of the people of this county.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, but don't, we can't throw him off the board unless he's done something affecting the board.
What's your charter say? Y'all, y'all have a charter?
We have bylaws.
We have bylaws, you have bylaws? You don't have a parent to remove somebody under your bylaws?
They're, they're written, grounded, what those are. Probably glass cars.
You don't care?
So, and so, let y'all know, I understand what your problem is. I'm the only physician in this area that has completed a residency at University of Alabama, School of Medicine, Occupational and Environmental Medicine. I've been through all this, I know what y'all are after. I don't, I don't fault y'all with that, I was up there, I would be right out there with y'all longer than that, and do whatever we can. But, uh, you know, just like y'all said, you're fighting some big money. But we're East Tennessee, that's what I tell people. Moving into East Tennessee, don't come up here and tell us how to do things. So that's the reason, that's the reason I voted here, so I fully understand and I wouldn't wanna be living up there.
Listen, we're getting off subject and we do have roll call, we've got a motion in a second, but we're gonna have a roll call this time. Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yeah.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Remind me I will sign back tonight, Robbie, I need you to sign it so we can get, uh, stand for your official copy before she leaves. Of course, Ben, the room, uh, that, I need the requests, we have nothing else on the agenda?
We changed it, Brian. We just changed it. We're done, I think.
Yes, sir. Okay, I've had a request for a suspension, uh, what was, what was the suspension on, Rick?
Uh, it's kinda all, it coincided, it worked good, uh, I've been talking to Earhart, and he went, worked with the commissioner stuff that come up with Forest Service. I thought it was a good time, and then Derek just talked to the lady, he's gonna relay some information to us too that affects the meeting and this meeting.
Just, just real quick, so rebuilding the Whitewater Center is an active project now, and I'm one of the at-large members from county to get input to that group that's designing and locating a new Whitewater Center. And they've asked us, who should we talk to, and I've told them absolutely, we have to talk to all commissioners. So they've asked for a date, they'll be here on August ninth and tenth, and they have multiple groups, so they'll be able to conduct up to three meetings at one time. They're just looking for a time that, that they can meet with you on either of those two dates to get input from your district, your thoughts, so all that's taken into account for the new design.
What's the latest since they, that we have, eh?
They doing evening for the ones that work?
They've been very flexible, I haven't seen a time period, but I know they've offered up time periods as late as five P M. to meet. So I'm sure if something came up in a meet later, there's, it's a group from the University of Georgia that Forest Service is hired to help coordinate all this activity, so I'm sure they're staying in the area. I feel pretty confident that a late meeting, if that's what.
Is that something that you can find out, at least one group?
Sure, yeah.
So that's the ones that work.
I'll, I'll ask tomorrow and, uh, I can get that information back to you, Tony, when distributed. Y'all can just give us lots of time that, hey, there's a group that can meet morning, a group afternoon, and a group really late.
I got motions.
Go ahead.
Ben the rules.
You meant a motion to spend?
Yeah.
On this federal.
Yeah.
All right.
I got it.
Motion to spend, roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mush Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan. John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Okay, you are in suspension, and the request was, and what I understand, you want.
This is just coming up, coming up when Derek deals, but this is other discussions, we've had with Earhart about some issues going on in the county, and we used to have a federal lands committee, and since the new commission's come on, we've got to redo it. And it's, uh, one commission and one citizen.
Per district.
Per district. And it was very effective when we done it, the light sign, so.
Is that, so you're requesting it to be reappointed?
Yep.
Now, it is one commission, per district, and each commissioner will turn in their name from their district to a citizen from that district. It's a total now of eight-person board. Uh, okay, and that's your request?
To reappoint.
Reappoint.
And I think he's got a meeting, he said coming up in a couple of weeks on all of this. But if you wanna wait till, look, if you wanna wait the next month to do it, we can, anybody that wants to still go that meeting in two weeks.
Well, anybody can anyway, and I'm gonna appoint the committee now, because I've had some questions over the, um, boat ramps and some other issues that, uh, people have been knowing, especially on that rally race and how it was handled, and people still ain't happy about that. So I'm gonna go ahead and appoint the committee, Brooks, John Keith, Danny, and me. And that's the ones from the commission, and then turn in your names for the ones in your, uh, in your district to me so we can go ahead and add them as well, I'll send you the names since I do. So each one of you that's on that committee needs to send me a name of somebody you want from your district on community. And that's a federal lands committee.
It was effective, we had one before, it was a good lead on between the, Mike, with Mike Hunter, you know, talking straight to the Forest Service, it worked really well, and then anything else goes on the county, because we do that to interact with the Forest Service at times. And it's a good way to be a direct link between the public and Forest Service.
Now, is that just to, uh, federal?
That is, is federal lands.
Not proven, not this state.
Right, federal lands committee, it'll overturn, but state.
It'll overturn it.
We're not fighting.
It's federal, it's not federal. I mean, it can be federal, not state.
Well, you should, we suspended the rules, I would assume we have to, you have to make a motion or anything?
No, I, I, that's, that's already set up, I'm just making the performance back to, that committee was set up years ago. It's still standing.
Why did you suspend the rules? You know, why couldn't you just discuss, discuss it in the citation?
We just wanna hear the suspensions. Found and.
Of ways found.
I hear a motion to adjourn, I gotta move.